Good evening. Welcome to the Canby City Council Regular Meeting, May 1st, 2013. We're picking up where we left off. We had a work session just a little bit ago, so we're back in it in here. So we will stand for flag salute and a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay still for a moment, please. Okay. Well, as I said, we had a work session a little bit ago this evening to discuss the proposed transit room tax and then also discussion of increase for sanitary and storm sewer service. And so we will move through the agenda there. So we have a few proclamations today. First one is for Water Safety Month, whereas the citizens of Canby recognize that swimming and aquatic-related activities contribute to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people, and whereas the citizens of Canby understand the essential role that water safety education plays in preventing drownings and recreational water-related injuries, and have demonstrated that understanding by approving funding to continue operation of the Canby Swim Center, and whereas the city of Canby is aware of the contributions made by the recreational water industry, as represented by the many organizations, including the Canby Swim Center, involved in the National Water Safety Month Coalition, that have developed safe swimming facilities, swim lessons, and other aquatic programs, home pools and spas, and related activities. And whereas these facilities, along with the many natural rivers and ponds in the Canby area, are providing healthy places to recreate, learn and grow, build self-esteem, confidence, and a sense of self-worth, which contributes to the quality of life in our community, and whereas the citizens of Canby recognize the ongoing efforts and commitment of the Canby Swim Center to educate the public, and especially children regarding water safety issues, so that they may safely enjoy the benefits of the water-related activities, and whereas the citizens of Canby understand the vital importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to area rivers and swimming holes. Now therefore I, Brian Hodgson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Canby, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Water Safety Month in the city of Canby, and do urge all those in the Canby area to support and promote this observance, given unto my hand this day, or this first day of May, 2013, the city of Canby, Oregon. I believe we have Eric here.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any comments? Eric, all right.
As it is Water Safety Month, we have a lot of different activities going on right now. Now is a great time to sign up for swimming lessons for the summer or for the end of the spring. We also have the Gator Grinder Triathlon going on a week after this, the May 11th, the day before Mother's Day, and I invite all of you to come out and come watch that. It's in the morning at the Canby Swim Center, where they swim 500 yards, bike for 12 miles, and run for three miles, and we have about 300 participants in that, plus a lot of family members and people just cheering them on.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Our second proclamation is the Poppy Days in Canby, whereas the American Legion Auxiliary adopted the poppy as its memorial flower, which pays tribute to the war dead and serves as a source of aid to surviving veterans and their families. And whereas the contributions provided by the American Legion Auxiliary are put to good use in support of the children and youth of the Canby community and toward the rehabilitation and care of veterans, and whereas the work of the American Legion Auxiliary through the annual sale of poppies is a proper and fitting tribute to the acts of patriotism and courage made by our nation's veterans in times of national need. Now therefore I, Brian Hodgson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Canby, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2013 as Poppy Month. And I do further proclaim the week of May 26th through June 1st, 2013, as Poppy Days in the city of Canby, and urge all citizens in the city of Canby to proudly remember the sacrifices made by the members of our armed forces by contributing to the American Legion Auxiliary during the month of May 2013 in support of their service to our country's veterans, given unto my hand this first day of May 2013. And... Perfect. Thank you very much. Why don't you have that and say a few words for us?
Hello. My name is Patricia House, and I'm an auxiliary member of the American Legion Post 122 here in Canby. And so this coming Memorial Day and the whole month of May, I'll be out at Thriftway, Fred Meyer, and lots of the stores in town. And hopefully I want to try to get to the post office as well. But we have really nice poppies to 2013, and also it's really a good privilege to help out with the community and the American Legion. Thank you.
Thank you. And the third and final proclamation tonight is the National Association of Letter Carriers National Food Drive Day. A mouthful there. Whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers, in conjunction with the National Rural Letter Carriers Association, Campbell Soup Company, Valpak, U.S. Postal Service, United Way, AFL-CIO, Feeding America, Uncle Bob Self-Storage, the AARP, GLS, Source Direct Plastics, Publix, and Velasis are coordinating a non-perishable food drive. And whereas the St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank at St. Patrick's Church and Canby's local food banks are in need of food at all times, and whereas the food bank shelves are continually in need of replenishment due to the ongoing dramatic increase in the need for food, and whereas last year 10,402 pounds of non-perishable food was collected, and whereas during the last six months, the total number of food orders at the St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank in Canby was 6,641. And whereas the local letter carriers will collect non-perishable food items placed by mailboxes on Saturday, May 11th, 2013. Now therefore I, Brian Hodgson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Canby, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 11th, 2013, as the 2013 National Association of Letter Carriers National Food Drive Day, and urge all citizens in the city of Canby to participate in this worthwhile event by donating non-perishable food items to help feed those who are in need, given unto my hand this first day of May, 2013.
Thank you. How are you?
Fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hodgson and council. My name is Irene Brushears. Well, I'm the mail lady, as of tomorrow, five years retired. I'd like to introduce you to Gretchen McCollum from the St. Patrick's Church, the food bank, that will be collecting and sorting everything that you give us. As you see, the flyers in front of you, those are for you as a reminder at home, please put food in the provided yellow bags this year. We're not going to have the separate cars, but look for the bags in your mailbox starting next week, and we'll be collecting all the food on Saturday, May 11th. And we thank you for all your efforts for this. I know Gretchen and the team is just incredible. If you ever want to see a bunch of busy bees, just go to the food bank on Saturday and our local Canby post office employees, clerks, and carriers. On behalf of John Dewar, our chairman, who was unable to be here, we thank you for taking the time to remember your neighbors and your friends and possibly yourselves. So thank you very much, and don't forget. Thank you.
So under letter E, is that all direct added maybe of either you, Greg, or Joe?
That would be me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know the whole timeframe, but a couple of years ago, a project started on Second Avenue, at least the planning portion of it, and it was for a dance studio. And at that time, there was pre-construction or pre-application meetings, et cetera, and of course, all of the utilities go, our public works goes to those meetings and talks about what's needed in terms of sewer, storm, water, where it's going to go, what you need to do. At that point, or just after that, I think a year later, the street, Second Avenue, was paved, brand-new pavement, and I think the project was delayed. Mr. Monan is here to discuss that if need be, but the street was paved and then it was asked to be cut at the time. Of course, he may not have known where that water was going, but we have a street person who's very conscientious about newly paved streets, because we hear about it quite a bit. Why did you cut up that new street? So Mr. Nellzine asked that this one come to the council, and that is allowable per our city code, and so unfortunately for Mr. Monan, I ask him to fill out an application. He graciously did so, and this is just for approval. And he's actually supplied a drawing. Jerry has looked at that and said it looks pretty good. He may meet with Mr. Monan to discuss the finalization of that, but I think it looks very good. I don't know if Mr. Monan would like to discuss this or not.
Mr. Monan, any comment or...
The...I hadn't planned on making any comments, but I can't. It was actually a pre-application meeting that we went to, and at that time, you're gathering information to see if the job's going to go, and it was brought to our attention at some point. We had two of them, that at some point they would like to, or they were going to pave that road, which was, would have been great if it would have worked in our timeframe, that we could have had it done. There was no way. When you were gathering information, though, you're trying to figure out if the job's going to go, if it's going to happen, there was no way to determine the size of the pipe that we need to go in there. You're really prospecting, you know, the timing didn't line up. So the street got paved. We're being made to tap into that line for a fire suppression system. We would rather not. It's a big expenditure, but we have to, and as for state code and county code, we have to. So one, city attorney's telling us we need to tap that line, and then another, you know, they're telling us they don't want us to unless you approve it. So we're kind of in a rock and a hard spot, and there's really nothing we could have done to prevent it from happening this way, so we're just asking that we go in and we will repair the road according to the standards that Portland sets out, and that's the ones that we had submitted.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Also, Mayor, just to let you know, the city attorney is actually working on a ordinance related to street cutting, and it addresses newly paved streets, and so I look for that in the future. We'll have a workshop on that.
Perfect. I know that that's a...our street guys are pretty, we get pretty excited about cutting into fresh pavement, so would this be an official motion that would need to be made?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any questions about the permit and application here?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What is the definition of a new street? That is freshly paved up to five years, I think, is the way we're looking at this ordinance.
Well, I think the way I've drafted one that is, you know, still could be amended, if you guys had wanted to amend it, but the way it's...part of the permitting will be if you want to cut into a street that has been paved in the last 12 months, there's going to be a certain increased permit fee associated. If you want to cut into a street that is between one year and two years, there's going to be a lessened fee, but still a greater fee than it is now, and then the third year, even a lesser fee, but greater than it is now. So it'll be the first three years it's tapered down, but what it does is it gives an incentive for folks to work with our workspeople ahead of time, because there's going to be a couple thousand dollar extra bill if you cut into a street that is only a year old.
Okay. Well, I think Mr. Monan raises a good point here, that sometimes even a year out, you don't know what you're going to do, and I'm thinking about five years out, that the development plans may emerge that no one would have anticipated, so, all right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Ballroom motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the street excavation application by Monan Construction for 655 Southwest Second Avenue.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Dale, signed by Counselor Coleman, to approve street excavation application for 655 Southwest Second Avenue. All those in favor? All opposed? That passes 6-0. Great. Thank you. And my girl will hopefully be on the way. Okay. Communications. Okay. First opportunity of the evening for citizen inputs and community announcements by anybody that would like to come up and say anything that's not on the agenda. Great. Seeing none, we'll move into mayor's business. I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for Shred Day. They had almost over 500 cars come through and take advantage of the shredding and electronics that were being recycled. It was a dramatic increase even over last year's Shred Day. Also want to thank the Chamber, as well as the city, for working together on the Business Safety Town Hall. We had about 10 businesses that attended that, and we had...a big thank you to Canby PD's Don Hem Street, Canby Fires, Todd Gary, SOS Locksmith, and Willamette Valley Security for showing up and helping out, hopefully educate some businesses on what we can do to make sure we're secure and looking out for each other. I attended a great training session with our city recorder and our city administrator on council and staff relations, so I feel like I related well.
It was council or city manager and staff relation.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Definitely passed on the feedback that that might be a great second class for new counselors and whatnot to attend in the future, so I'll be on the lookout for that. Attended, I'm sure Counselor Dale will touch on this as well, attended the CUP meeting, took great interest in the water rate conversation that they're having. I want to give a big thank you to Canby Ed Foundation for a wonderful dinner and speaker last week, two weeks ago? Last Thursday. Thank you. It was a great evening, and the speaker was fantastic. I have nothing to report on C4 at this time, and then tomorrow morning, bright and early at 6:30, is the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at the Cusford Town Hall at 6:30 a.m., so if you're so inclined for breakfast and praying for the city, come on out. With that, I will start there at the end of the table there with Counselors Ayers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no liaison reports, as the Adult Center Board meets next week, and the last meeting of the Parks Board was not held because of lack of items. I only have one thing to report, and that is on follow-up to the food drive on May 11th. The Canby Rotary Club has about four workdays a year where we go do things in the community, and our next workday is May 11th, where we will be at the food bank, unloading the mail carriers' vehicles with all of the tons of food. We're sure the people in the community are going to donate, and we'll be taking it in and helping stack the shelves and organize the food as it comes in. So we'll have probably between 30 and 40 rotarians there working for the afternoon, helping unload the food and put it away.
Great. Council Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the school board, as school board liaison, I will report that the school board work session is tomorrow evening at 6:30 in the Meridian Room, which is at the admin office on Ivy. I won't be able to attend that, because I'll be attending the C4 meeting with Mayor Hodgson. But another announcement on the school front, Canby Education Foundation is sponsoring a teacher adoption program, and they're looking for volunteers from the community to donate their time. They could help in areas such as math and reading tutoring, teacher prep work, photocopying, grounds work, cross guard, that kind of thing. There are plenty of opportunities available. If you know someone or yourself that wants to donate their time, you can get ahold of Tracy Height, who is the volunteer coordinator, and she said I could give her phone number, but I feel we're doing that on TV, so if you call City Hall or myself, I'll be glad to pass on the contact information. And the Main Street Promotion Committee has a new date for the Garden Spot Run. The Canby Garden Spot Run will not be this weekend, it will be held Saturday, September 7th. And the Main Street Design Committee, I was not able to attend at a Martha-Domestical appointment for my son, so I will let Counselor Coleman cover that one. And then last weekend, Friday, Saturday, I spent in the last workshop for the Ford Family Foundation Effective Organizations. Now, if I could just say that. It was a very well-attended workshop, and there was a lot of representation from many, many organizations in our community. It was the second installment of the leadership program that Ford Family Foundation is doing here, so you'll look for more of that in year three, which will be next year, where we'll do another cohort, so we'll follow up with more information on that as it comes. That's my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity on April 24th to attend the Main Street meeting. We discussed First Fridays, the enthusiasm growing around the facade improvement projects within town, real momentum building around the improvements in the downtown, and, you know, improvements, I'd just like to recognize NAPA Auto Parts for, you know, doing a really nice paint job on their building recently, and I think it's just really catching fire. Also attended the Ford Family Foundation Leadership Class on Effective Organizations this past Friday and Saturday, and like Tracy said, I think it's an excellent group, and next year they'll be putting on another leadership class, and highly encourage anyone interested to sign up for that, and that's all I have.
Notice that T-line has completed their facade.
Lovely color scheme, too.
Yeah, it's great. If you're a Duck fan, that is a great color scheme. I'm impartial because I'm mayor, so, and I didn't go to either school, so. Counselor Dale.
Mr. Mayor, go Beavers! My Canby Utility report for the evening, if you drive by the Knightsbridge substation down at Barlow Road and Knightsbridge Road, you'll see that the steel is all up now, and the transformer is starting to be what they call "dressed out." They're attaching all the fins and insulators and such, so it can be tested. Canby Utility is also proposing a water rate increase this year. That's to build up capital reserves for future projects and to ensure fiscal operational stability for their budget. The last increase was in the year 2007. Now, this increase is only to the base service charge. It's not a usage-based increase. And for the average residential account, that works out to be $2.83 a month, or in other words, a little less than a dime a day. So a very modest increase. It's proposed to take effect June 1st, and Canby Utility at its headquarters just behind us here, will be having a public hearing on Tuesday, May 14th, at 7:00 p.m. So if you're interested in that, come to the hearing. And then finally, for those that live on 13th Avenue in the south, they have begun to paint the brand-new reservoir seismic refit that they did, and it's a lovely shade of Canby Cougar Blue. So thank you, Canby Utility. That concludes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the Bike Pedestrian Committee met yesterday, had a brainstorming session on a number of things. Pretty excited about nice weather. Some of us are fair-weather cyclists, so pretty excited about the idea that the Canby Ferry is going to be reopening. It's one of the real linchpins in terms of cycling around the area. County plans to reopen the Canby Ferry on or near July 1st, and the Bike Pedestrian Committee wants to have a little mini Canby Ferry Festival. One of the ideas was that they would dress up as ferries and ride their bikes into town, so we'll see where that goes. Also, at the brainstorming session yesterday, the Bike Pedestrian Committee really decided that it's going to try and work stronger with the Main Street program, since so much of the Main Street program is about livable streets, walkable streets, and that sort of thing. So fortunately, our two staff people for those two projects are about 10 feet away. Main Street program, couple items already said about that. We have a return of First Friday coming up, return of the cash mob, so come on down this Friday and enjoy the nice weather. I'll be right there praying with you tomorrow at 6:30, Mr. Mayor, so we'll see what good outcomes Providence may hold for this city with our combined efforts there. And also at the Canby Ed Foundation, so exciting to see such a great turnout, to supplement some of the educational programs. Counselor Ayers and the mayor also participated in that as well. Thanks.
Interesting tidbit from the Canby Ed Foundation, that since its inception, they've collected and donated back out to the Canby schools over $400,000 for various programs, so...
And that's in about 12, 13 years, I mean, a fairly short period of time.
Yeah. Great organization, doing a lot of great things, so thank you, sir. Counselor Ryder. Okay. Moving to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the April 17th, 2013 City Council Regular Meeting, the reappointment of Ryan Oliver, Matt Olson, and Bethany Davis to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for terms to expire on June 30th, 2016, and the reappointment of Gwen Polgar and Elena Knut to the City Budget Committee for terms to expire on June 30th, 2016.
So moved by Counselor Dale, separated by Counselor Hensley, to adopt the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the April 17th, 2013 City Council Regular Meeting, reappointment of Ryan Oliver, Matt Olson, and Bethany Davis to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for terms to expire on June 30th, 2016, and reappointment of Gwen Polgar and Elena Knut to the City Budget Committee for terms to expire on June 30th of 2016.
Any's in favor? Aye. This is 6-0. Thank you to all those committee members. It's helpful for us to conduct our city business, which I appreciate. Great. Moving on to the agenda. I think next up is a public hearing piece. So, public hearing. So we have a public hearing on the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on Fred Meyer Stores Incorporated Site and Design Review Application, DR 12-03. So I'll read my lovely spiel here. The matter presently before the City Council is an appeal of a matter heard previously by the City Planning Commission. The record of this hearing was created before the commission, and therefore there will be no new evidence taken tonight. The council will hear oral arguments or review written arguments by the appellant, pardon me, the appellant, the respondent, or their agents, and others who have previously presented testimony to the commission. The applicable substantive criteria for evaluating the appeal are displayed on the wall. We don't have those this evening? Please direct your arguments to these criteria or other criteria on the plan or land use regulations which you believe you apply, which you believe apply, pardon me. Failure to raise an issue at this hearing accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to Luba based on that issue. You will be limited by time for your argument. The appellant will have a total of, what did we say, 15 minutes to speak. The appellant may use all of that time in their initial presentation or reserve a portion for rebuttal. We will give you rebuttal time. Respondent, opponent will follow and be given 15 minutes to speak as well. After respondent's argument, others that wish to present arguments will have three minutes each, followed by any rebuttal the appellant has reserved for closing. Those people other than the appellant and respondent that are interested in presenting oral or written argument, please indicate your desire to speak or submit written argument by raising your hands at this time. Right now I just have one for, is it Brad Holton? Holcomb, thank you. So we'll give you that opportunity, sir. Conflicts of interest. At this time, I would ask any member of the hearing body who has a conflict of interest, please indicate the nature and extent of the conflict, and whether you intend to participate in or abstain from hearing the present matter. Counselors Ayers.
No conflict.
No conflict.
Council Hensley?
No conflict.
Council Coleman?
No conflict.
I also have no conflict. Council Dale?
No conflict.
No conflict.
Thank you, sir. Excellent. Any ex parte contact? Also, if any member of the hearing body has any ex parte contact with anyone prior to this hearing, including a visit to the site, please declare the nature and substance of such contact at this time. Council Ayers?
It's a small town, so it's difficult, but I've had no contact.
Council Hensley?
Well, I have been past the site, I've not talked to either party, so I guess that's all I have to say. Like I said, it's a small town.
Okay.
No contact.
My contact is that the, one of the property owners, or part of the property owner team is Ryan Oliver, he's my insurance agent, and also on the Chamber Board of Directors with me as well, but we have not discussed this issue.
Mr. Mayor, I'm familiar with the site, but I've had no ex parte contact.
Okay. Council Parker?
Mr. Mayor, Ryan Oliver is also my insurance agent, but we have not discussed this issue. And two years ago, the Olivers let me put a "Save Our School" sign on that property, so I was physically on that property.
Okay.
No contact.
Mr. Mayor, let me add one more thing. I'm the liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board, and Ryan Oliver is the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Board, but since we knew this was coming, we have both been diligent in not to discuss it in any way, shape, or form.
Perfect. Does any member of the audience have any questions for any councilor or the mayor regarding ex parte contact or conflict of interest at this time? Okay. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. We will get a staff report, and then that will be followed by the appellant's argument, the respondent's argument, the appellant's rebuttal, questions from the hearing body, and decision by hearing body. Decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing, or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of the date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the procedure of the hearing? Okay. I'm going to make a couple of points here before we, just for our clarification, I know that in our packet, our planning director, Brian Brown, provided this in there, but I just want to address, under procedure, point C, that the appeal shall be limited to the specific issues raised. Unless the hearing body allows additional evidence or testimony concerning any other relevant issue, the hearing body may allow additional evidence if it determines that such evidence is necessary to resolve the case. Under point 3A, the commission did not, sorry, the council shall overturn the decision of the Planning Commission only when one or more of the following findings is made: that the commission did not correctly interpret the requirements of this title, the comprehensive plan, or other requirements of law; B, that the commission did not observe the precepts of good planning as interpreted by the council; or that the commission did not adequately consider all the information which was pertinent to the case. I will, like I've asked, that each will be able to make 15 minutes' worth of comments, please, and we have our timer set for that for this evening. We'll give, like I said, the appellate the opportunity, as well as the respondent, and then rebuttal piece. I ask that you stick to the points that were made. We have exhausted information that we have all partaken in over the last week and a half to prepare for this. I understand that there is new designs that wasn't heard, that are different from the Planning Commission meeting, and so I ask that, I'll put to the council, does the council want to hear new information regarding design changes between the Planning Commission meeting and this hearing?
I guess I would question why new designs would be coming to this body before approved by the Planning Commission. I don't know. It seems out of order to me, but does anybody else have another thought?
I'm inclined to believe the same.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, seems to me those should run through the Planning Commission first.
All right. Is there general consensus on that piece in terms of that it would be returned back to the Planning Commission for the signed piece?
I hadn't thought about it, but it sort of makes sense, yeah, unless our planner can explain that this is appropriate procedure, but now that you mention it, Tracy, you're right.
Okay, so we will, I ask that you guys leave that portion out of this hearing, we just keep it to the facts of what's at hand tonight.
But do we know for certain there is a change to?
It's on our pink sheet, isn't it?
It's in one of the...
It is in one.
Yes.
That's right.
So I just ask that we keep with the material that was presented to us, and that if anything's brought forward, it's based on the questions that we have asked from up here. So with that, any questions on what I've laid out? Joe, am I tracking well?
Yes.
Perfect. Staff, welcome. The floor is yours.
Mayor, you took care of most of what I thought needed to be said, and so I have very little else to say, other than this is a little bit different in the fact that it's an appeal, and because it's an appeal, you're not as such necessarily totally rehearing, you know, as the decision-making body, you're hearing the appeal from the opposition, who's going to speak first, and so that's basically the difference tonight. Fred Meyer project, and the reason that you have some information in your packet is because there was a response by Fred Meyer to respond to the appellant or the applicant of this appeal, and to present some additional minor modifications to the site plan. Staff made that decision when it was submitted, that they were minor in nature, and that there was nothing in the code that would prohibit you from going ahead and looking that if you chose to do so. So that's why it's in your packet. You certainly have the right not to review that or to exclude it, as you just indicated.
I appreciate that. Based on the information that we have had here, I, we are already dealing with muddy waters, and would prefer not to muddy them any further if we can, so I would prefer that we, if we can, exclude that portion from the conversation for tonight, and keep it to, I guess, the facts that are being appealed here.
So I think, I'll give this over to Angie now. Her presentation was somewhat, it will be very limited, because she was basically going to focus on some of those changes that had been presented, because I might comment on the fact that your overall evaluation criteria are the same that were applicable to the Planning Commission. All the code criteria for site and design review, et cetera, are, you know, what you're considering as well.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
I ask the point of order, representing the applicant?
Yes.
For the record, my name is Steve Abel, I'm an attorney representing the applicant. I've appeared before you on these matters in the past. Let me explain further why those submittals were made. Those were design review responses, if you will, to the appellant's arguments with respect to this design review package. They were submitted in order to rebut the allegations that are made by the appellant. So they are relevant to the core of this hearing. I understand the City Council would prefer that those matters be heard by the Planning Commission first, and I can understand that. So I think the appropriate procedure would be to just remand at this point the whole matter to the Planning Commission, since to have a hearing without the available rebuttal evidenced in terms of design that we've supplied would be a non-hearing. There's nothing we could talk about.
That was my concern. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess I would say that the appropriate procedure may very well be just as you want to, to remand it back to the Planning Commission, have a full hearing before the Planning Commission on the revised plans, work through the issues, and if there's an appeal taken out of that, it would come to you. If there's no appeal, it'd be final.
Yes, sir.
Can we get the opinion of the appellant, then? To see if there was any objection? I think that's fair. Yes, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for the record, Mike Connors, here on behalf of Save Downtown Canby. We're comfortable with the concept of remanding back to the Planning Commission, so long as we're not required to file a new appeal fee. As you may know, the appeal fees are pretty significant, it's a significant cost to my client. And so, provided that the purpose of the remand is to introduce the new evidence on the revised site plan, and whatever other related evidence that could be presented as well, and then basically amend the appeal accordingly and move forward to this body, we would support that.
The only other issue, although it's kind of implicit, because the person moving for the remand is the one who represents the person of the rights of which I'm about to speak, but there is the 120-day right, and so, just so it's on the record, that any disadvantage that you would face because of that 120-day, I assume you're waiving when you're asking to remand?
So we've consistently waived the 120-day provision with staff, and we could work out that date with staff tomorrow, or whenever it would be, so that that's not an issue.
Okay. So where's that, so?
So you could move to vote on remanding it back, or to decide the new, for a new hearing because of the changes?
See, I think it's just impossible for us to make a decision where you're changing half of, or a big portion of what the appeal is about, and I think it's, I think it's, if everyone can agree on the 100-day waivers and those kinds of things, and the applicant fee, that's, I don't know what staff has a problem with that, or the appellant fee, I mean.
They don't need to charge.
We can just carry that over?
I just think it would be a much cleaner decision to go back, and so that we have a whole package to consider an appeal on, not just a piece of the package, that I don't know how we could carve pieces of it apart, frankly.
Okay. Council Parker?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Council Hensley for catching this, because it really does respect the process and the role of the Planning Commission. Otherwise, we have bifurcated information, some of which has gone through the Planning Commission, some of which hasn't, and it's possible this may be resolved at the Planning Commission level without the involvement of the council. But I think the idea of trying to keep straight what's new information and what's old information being appealed, as you say, it's muddy enough, let's not muddy it further.
Mr. Brown, how quickly can we get this back before the Planning Commission do?
Well, procedure-wise, what I'm trying to think in my mind is that we go back to the Planning Commission, which is not a problem at all, but should it not get resolved, then we're still continuing this appeal application with no additional fee, and it would seem that we would have to re-advertize, so that's one additional expense, and 20 days before it could get back here, I guess, because of our advertisement.
20 days after the Commission, Planning Commission?
Well, after the Planning Commission acts on this, then we'll have to do, if that doesn't resolve it, and they want to bring it back to you again on that appeal application, then we'll have to advertise again. Because you can't, unless you can set a hearing after the Planning Commission meets to a date certain of when they would come back, if they did, and that's kind of nebulous.
When is the, is the Planning Commission meeting again? Is it too late to get it, or?
I wouldn't have to go get my calendar.
Yeah, we have a special meeting, we're now setting for May 28th, which, they could be on that agenda.
Is it second and fourth Mondays, they do?
Second and fourth Mondays, yeah.
So that would be next 13th, is that on that agenda, on the 13th?
Is there a meeting on the 13th?
There was on a calendar that was printed up probably last week.
The reason I keep, I want to ask is because I want to keep it moving, and I'm glad that the attorneys are working together on this, but I want to keep it, I want to keep it moving, so.
Do you think we have to advertise the Planning Commission meeting?
I think so. To me, it's a modification of the design review.
Yeah, so generally, people are in pretty much agreement, we even have to advertise the Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, I think that's right. I would assume that you have to do notice for that Planning Commission meeting, I don't know when that would be done, so the 28th can be pushing it, just because of the notice.
Right, so it'll be the first meeting in June, before we could get this on the Planning Commission.
Can I ask what the order of magnitude is of the notice? You said that on the appeal, that if we didn't have additional fees, we'd have to, they'll go through the notice.
The notice would probably involve sending letters to the surrounding property owners within 500-foot radius, or it may have been 200 for an appeal. I'll have to look that up.
It's not a huge cost, I would say, doing that or notice again, it's not.
It's under 100 bucks.
We've done...
Let's also people who are actually in the given person as well.
I just, like you said, Mark, what's the, what are our appropriate timelines? Can we have it as part of that special meeting on the 28th?
It doesn't appear that we're going to be able to do that, so it'll be the first meeting in June, which had the date, second Monday, June, or fourth?
Second and fourth, correct? June 10th. June 10th.
And then after that, when would we see that, if in fact it was appealed again?
The, anybody has 15 days to appeal? So 10 days to appeal, so it would depend on if we got another appeal application, and then, at least...
I also assume that the findings would be adopted on the 10th, which may or may not be true given how these proceedings have come.
So, probably appeal, if it went back to council, would be sometime in July or August, looks like.
Well, I, I'm sorry to see it get dragged out, but I just don't know how we could make a decision on something tonight that has, even though they may be minor, they're still substantive to the appeal, and I don't know how we'd carve it apart.
Yeah, as long as the parties are agreeable to the timeline.
Do we have an official motion to?
I would, I would...
I think that's a safe way to go, is just to move to remand.
Remand, yeah, and I would move to remand the APP 13-01 to the Planning Commission for consideration of the changes, the proposed changes.
I'll second that.
So the motion has been made by Council Ayers, second by Council Coleman, to remand the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on Fred Meyer's Stores Incorporated Site and Design Review Application, DR 12-03, until further notice. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 6-0. Thank you all, I appreciate that.
He comes from the... We have the four-year ordinance, 1573, this is in the Canby Municipal Code, Chapter 9.48.55, by those who are by most people, exceptions and differences, and this is the final separate reason.
Fantastic. I will, we, just to recap there, Greg or Joe, on this lovely change.
I actually presented this at the last meeting, and we're now going to require that bank a lotting application and get the police chief's signature, it's just a little more tidying up the code.
Perfect.
And there's also now a $75 fee to cover the publication and mailing of the grants.
Perfect. Thank you, Kim.
And again, that's for for-profit activities, not nonprofit?
Correct, we waive the fees for nonprofits.
Applications, right, okay.
Multiple dates, they can apply one time.
They'll be on one application, yeah, like the wild here, that would all go on one. Okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I would move adoption of ordinance number 1373, an ordinance amending Canby Municipal Code, Chapter 9.48.050...
Canby Municipal Code, Chapter 9.48.050, regarding noise control, exceptions, and variances.
Second.
Motion by Council Ayers, signed by Council Hensley, to approve ordinance 1373, amending Canby Municipal Code, Chapter 9.48.050, regarding noise control, exceptions, and variances. Second reading.
Council Ayers?
Yes.
Council Hensley? Yes. Council Coleman?
Yes.
Council Dale?
Aye.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Ryder?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
Good maverick.
All right. Any new business? Do we have any? And city administrators, business, and staff reports?
Two weeks from today, there'll be a proclamation, and it is going to be a proclamation for Public Works Week, which is May 19th through 25th, and I wanted to announce it tonight to make sure that you all don't plan any vacations around that time, because it's going to be pretty exciting. The public works crew is really excited about the fact that we're going to kind of showcase public works. We're talking about...
Do we get to run a machine?
Absolutely.
Cool.
Absolutely. 19th through the 25th, and actually, the 19th is a Sunday, but that's when it starts, is the 25th, Saturday, but we're going to do it during the week.
It's June or May.
May, I'm sorry.
Fantastic.
And we're looking at bringing all the public works equipment down here. We will have sewer cameras hooked up, and you can actually operate those. I don't know if Kim got to operate that one.
I did.
Yeah, okay.
Why don't we use that sewer camera on my house, my line there? We could, no, that would be, that would be a game.
Little guy friend is.
Okay, good.
I know that this is something that Jerry has, our public works crew has talked about for a year or so now, and I'm glad that we're pulling that together. I think it's pretty neat to showcase, close off the street and fire up some of the gear. Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
When I was, when I was working for the city manager in Gresham, we started doing this, and it turned into the biggest event of the year. Moms and dads would bring their kids down, and they'd be crawling all over these giant machinery, and you know, there's a certain age of kids that a big machine is just a wonder.
It's those that are 69 and under.
And you will not believe how popular an event this is. We should get a vendor down there.
Awesome.
Anyway, there'll be all kinds of things. Maybe plant some trees. We have an arborist in, you know, the correct way, and anyway, it'll be, I'm excited about.
Great.
Watching the council create tools and stuff.
Sure.
We have insurance.
You can get me a purple heart.
It would be a first.
Yeah.
Great.
That's all, thank you.
That's all you have?
All right.
Another opportunity for citizen input, if you'd like to make a comment, or seeing the two citizens shaking their heads no.
No, nothing, Bob or Bob? My friend Bob, my other friend Bob?
So, we'll go to action review.
You have approved the consent agenda. You've remanded APP 13-01 back to the Planning Commission, and you've adopted ordinance 1373.
Great. Is there any exact session this evening? There is not.
All right. Mr. Mayor?
Ah, yes.
I don't know, we adjourned this.
I second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, Canby. Thank you. This is...